The Rockland Fire Protection District Board of Trustees meeting for March 11th, 2019. Roll call, trustee Snowman.
Here.
Trustee Crum.
Here.
Trustee Rogers. Aye. Pledge of allegiance, please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, consideration of the minutes of the regular board meeting from February 11th. Any comments or changes? If not, could I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
I will second. Motion by Crum, second by Snowman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chiefs report. Chief Carrani?
Well, I handed out the call stats and wanted to ask any questions on those. And then, not sure how much you wanted to discuss that nine-one-one issue that we...
Yeah, I'd like to. Well, I'll let you go through what happened and then what you guys did. And then I'll tell you the follow-up that I did with my aunt and had a similar issue with these medical alert buttons. So if you want to go through it.
Sure. So we had a resident on Burr Avenue call or pushes medical alert button to summon an ambulance. After about two or three minutes, the alarm company contacted him, "What's the problem? I need an ambulance." He said, "An ambulance is on the way." So he waited probably another 10 minutes and there was still no ambulance. So he called 911 on his cellphone. And North Chicago picked up the call, transferred it to Lake County, who ultimately transferred it to Burn Hills. And at the same time the call was being transferred, the alarm company that was summoned now probably 12, 13 minutes earlier was calling Lake County saying they need an ambulance. So at that time, the resident decided to drive himself to the hospital. On the way to the hospital, pushed his OnStar button, notified the police that he saw the police and ambulance going to his house and that he was already on his way. They tried to get him to stop, but he didn't. So we followed up a little bit through our dispatch and tried to figure out what happened. The alarm monitoring company was not very cooperative, would not give us information. So finally got through that, talked to the resident, and he explained what happened. We explained what we did and what we found out. So essentially, a couple things. One, the number they had or that the alarm company had for contacting the fire department was the wrong number, but it still went to the sheriff's department, just makes another transfer. But the biggest problem was that there was a failure on his alarm company's part to actually call and follow through. So we still can't get any information what happened on their end and probably never going to tell us. But somebody failed big time on, you know, the service that he's paying for. So we told him to, you know, when he gets his bill once a month, and I tell us to everybody who has a fire alarm, burglar alarm, medical alert alarm, "When you get your bill, before you pay it, test the system, make sure it works." Burglar and fire alarms have a test procedure in the keypad that you can test and it sends a signal back, make sure it's working. So, you know, that's just one thing. And then we, as a result of this, that 911 information sheet went out to the Knollwood Neighbors to kind of identify what the problem was and what you can do to kind of fix it. The other thing that's going on is, you know, this, the 911 call transfers, cellular 911 call transfers, has been an issue for a long time. Whether you have cells, service, or voice, the voice over internet, it doesn't track your location or like a landline would. So if you call on your landline, it's directly routed to your dispatch center. When you call on a cellphone in your mobile, then you could be anywhere in Knollwood. You could be picked up by Lake Forest, you could be picked up by Lake County, you could be picked up by Lake Bluff, or in this case, picked up by North Chicago. And then they have procedures to transfer that call to the correct location. And that's a problem county-wide, that's not, you know, just relative to Knollwood. And we had the same issue in Libertyville, where a lot of our western boundary calls jump to month lines, their cell call, and then month line transfers more. So county is working on, and when I say county, the 911 consolidation group is working on a similar document, like we did a kind of a public safety message that's going to go throughout through the police and fire chiefs to the whole county. And kind of explain some things, do's and don'ts, and the correct phone numbers and that kind of stuff. But it's just kind of one of those things that we're trying to, you know, fix as best we can until we can get this consolidated 911 center up in the county. Because if there was only one dispatch center, all the calls are going to one location. You avoid all those transfers. But call transfers have been a big time problem county-wide for a long time. So that's kind of what happened and how we tried to fix it. I mean, there's, you can't fix the alarm companies if they're not going to do their job. And I did some research on the alarm companies. And in the state of Illinois, you have to be licensed as a private alarm company, which means you have a business license and one primary owner has to have the license and hold license. And they do a quick background check, there's no other requirements. There's no, you have to meet this time, you have to meet that time. UL will list you as a certain, or a listed company. You get to use the UL logo. You meet some other criteria to get that logo and that initial listing, but I'm not sure what the follow-up is after that. And it doesn't have really anything to do with times, it just says you follow certain procedures, you have your rated equipment and this and that. But as far as, you know, regular dispatch centers have industry standard times that have to be met for call-taking and dispatching, and then there's the response times and, you know, curb times and all that kind of stuff, there's none of that for private alarm companies. So you push your button or your alarm panel goes off. If they're busy, you might wait. You know, we don't, like you say, we don't know what happened with this one and they're not telling us, but the gentleman had to wait a long time for them to call and help.
So when you, when you, you and I spoke about that, my aunt, who also lives in Knollwood, has one of the medical alert buttons tied into ADT. So I, on your prompting, I called ADT and said I wanted to test it. And I pushed it and it sent off the burglar alarm. And I said, "Well, that, if she's not having a heart attack, that will probably give her one." So they said, "Oh, we can fix that." And after three attempts, they couldn't get that fixed. So we moved on and I said, "Well, what number do you call when she presses this medical alert? Who gets notified?" And the answer was, as you said, "We can't give you that information." I said, "Well, why can't you give me that information? So I just want to know who's contacting." And after about 35 minutes on the phone and being transferred to three different people and supervisors, they indicated that they called the county sheriff. And I said, "Well, specifically for this," I said, "Do you have on your notes that my aunt had called you several months ago and told you that the number that needed to be called for a medical alert push was 847-362-2121?" He said, "Well, I see that in the notes." I said, "Well, how do we get it from the notes to actually happening?" And the answer was, "We really don't have a way to do that, we just have it in the notes." So I think that what you're saying is right, and whatever we can do to notify the folks in the unincorporated area, that they really need to be diligent about this. I'm going to follow up for my aunt and talk to, I think there's Life Alert and Med Alert. I'm going to find out if one of them can guarantee me that when she presses that button, that it calls 847-362-2121 because she's on the north side. ADT will not do that. They just simply won't do that. And they said, "Well, that's really not a medical alert we sent her, it's just to set the alarm off." I said, "Well, you sold it to her as a medical alert. That's specifically what she wanted, to hang around her neck at night." Well, it sets the alarm off, I don't know what more you want. And again, not very pleasant, pretty abrasive to talk to until you got two or three supervisors up. So I would as, you know, whatever we can do, if you think we need to do a mailing or who's going to do a mailing or whatever, but we certainly should let the residents know that just by having that medical alert button, there's some work on their end they have to do to make sure that when they press that, the right people get called. I was stunned by going through this with ADT. I figured a company that size, this is going to be a breeze. If it's a problem, it's going to be corrected, no problem, thank you, sorry for the inconvenience. Uh-uh. And when it was done, there was still no, they still basically said no. So we're going to continue on and look for something better.
Dan, those two companies you used does do that. And you can also put a family member attached to it. So you can put the fire department number on there and you could put a family member. We used it for my great aunt.
One of the other things that they told me when I was talking to them is, "Well, you need to have the fire chief call us." And I said, "What?" They said, "Well, you need to call the fire chief and tell the fire chief to call ADT." I said, "Yeah, because that's what he has to do all day, is call all the medical alert companies and try to straighten you guys out." I said, "We're the people paying the bill, what more needs to be done?" And they simply, they're not going to do it. I mean, I already know that. The best that she's going to get from ADT is it's in their notes. So if the person that gets the alarm happens to read the notes, they might do that. So I know we've gotten it out through Knollwood Neighbors. If you think that we or you or combined between Lake Forest, Libertyville, and us, we should do a direct mailing. I don't know how we make the wording simple and clear for people to understand because it is confusing. My aunt would not have accomplished this on her own, she just wouldn't have.
Well, maybe we'll just wait and see. I saw a draft of the county's information today.
Right.
The only thing I didn't like about it is it's two pages and it gets kind of long.
Right.
But it is informative.
I did call our county board rep too. I called Mike Rumel and indicated what was wrong. And he spoke to someone at the 911 who evidently was getting in touch with you, a lady, I don't remember her name.
Amy.
Amy, correct. So, and he called back and said that they, this is elevating it again to being a problem and they're going to take it. Then I also relayed the ADT story and said, "This really needs to get handled, especially for seniors that are, that purchase this or sign up for this with this being their lifeline to medical assistance." So thanks for all your effort in contacting the resident.
Yeah, well, I mean, once, like you say, once we, you know, identified the problem, we want to get it taken care of. But we're going to, as a department, monitor these throughout the village and the fire district and the Rockland district to just kind of quiz if we know we're getting, because usually dispatches say we have medical alert with no contact, no voice contact.
Right.
And then we'll talk, kind of try and get a timeframe reference with the people. How long ago do you think you pushed the button? And if there's a systemic problem around, then we're going to have to look at, I mean, I hate to say more legislation, but there almost would need to be some requirements. If you're going to be in Illinois, you have to meet some kind of timeframe. You know, that could be years down the road, but if this is the product they're putting out, it's not a good product.
Well, I was most taken back by ADT just, when you told me they weren't very open and helpful, I thought, "Well, you know, maybe that's just isolated." And they, they wanted to help, not at all. I mean, I was really in inconvenience calling them and running them through the motions. And we won't tell you who we call. I thought, "How does that work? You're an alarm company, you won't tell me who you're calling?" So, all right, well, I guess everybody's on it. Whatever we can do, the Rockland Board, partner up with Lake Forest and Lake Bluff to get our residents the best information, we're on board with that. This was already published, correct? Okay. So, okay, Chief Cronin?
I think you all have a copy of the report also. So seven calls during the month, five EMS calls, one false call, and one structured fire at five south school to Valley Island.
You want to highlight that a little bit about how that went down in the call and what?
It was, the fire initially was called in by a person driving out 41. They were the ones who gave the description of where it was at and everything. So it came in as, their description was the southeast corner of the intersection, which would put it into a Lake Bluff grid 50 district. That was the initial response that was given out then was a Lake Bluff call. On more information, they found out that there was flames and stuff, so they upgraded it to a code four for Lake Bluff also. And then as units started arriving between Lake Bluff and Lake Forest arriving within 30 seconds of each other, they went to work. And at that point, someone was notified that it was a Lake Forest, would have been a, Lake Forest call, so it would have been in grid 42K for us. And then we changed our response, we got our shift commander up there, one of our off-duty chiefs was up there, our station one emptied out to get up there. Libertyville was there right initially, they got told out initially with their quints. So we had a good response right off the bat. It just, that put a little, just took a little time to get organized then. And so when we did go to a box alarm, we went to the box alarm for Lake Forest Fire Department. And it ended up being our, two of our battalion chiefs were the command structure at the fire.
Okay, nobody hurt?
Nobody hurt. You know, seemed like they got it under control pretty quickly. Multiple responses from other surrounding chiefs and fire departments. We filled in our change of quarters, Lake Bluff had their change of quarters, and so everything went pretty well. We're having some discussions though with Columbia Dispatch, just always, there's something to learn from every incident, so we are still having some discussions.
Okay, very good. Carl or Bob, you have anything for the chiefs?
I don't think so.
Anything else you want out of us? Great, we'll look forward to following up with you on the 911 calls. I will pass along to both of you what I come up with, with the first alert. I'm going to check into two or three of them and see which one of any of them will allow me to designate a number to be called versus calling the county and having it transferred. So I'm going to see if any one of them will allow us to select the 847-362-2121. And then I'll pass along to you and we'll, then I guess we'll try to pass along to our residents on if we find a company that's a little easier to get along with. Next item on the agenda is public comment. If anybody has anything they'd like to bring to the board's attention, please step up and state your name.
I have a question for Brian.
Yeah, let me get your name again.
That's fine, Brian. Was the payment distributed to President Dan Rogers or his truck?
I don't know.
Can you ask Troy for it?
Well, that might be, that should be in the financial records.
I'm just asking, but that's afterwards, so I can't ask a public comment then.
Yeah, I don't know.
Can you just nod your head yes or no? Okay, how can a payment be given to him when the case is still open with Lee coming?
Well, the...
The report is still open, Dan, Brian.
My recollection, even if the investigation is still ongoing, the damage to the vehicle occurred and there was an invoice submitted for the damage to the vehicle.
But how can it be paid?
Because the board approved it.
I just found out 40 minutes ago that it's still open. So the investigation is still open by a report that he made.
Yeah, I'm just here to tell you.
And I'm telling you that you're their lawyer.
Correct. And the board approved the payment for the reimbursement to the damage of the vehicle. And on submission of an invoice, the board reviewed the invoice, the board approved the reimbursement for the costs for the repair of the vehicle. And the fact that the investigation is ongoing hasn't nothing to do with that.
Well, they should not have, they should not have been paid.
Yeah.
Until that, it's been closed on a falsified report that he made.
That's an issue for the Lake County Sheriff.
Oh, it's not done yet, Brian.
Okay, anybody else? All right, next item, attorney's report. Brian, you're up.
Bear with me, I'm making notes here.
Oh, I have another question, Brian. My five minutes, three minutes is not up. From April 3rd to May, whenever the May board meeting, can this current board make decisions?
Yes, it's the board. I have a memorandum to talk about the transition. As I mentioned, Jesus, right after the election was approved, this is the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees is the Board of Trustees.
No, Jesus has nothing to do with this, I'm just asking a simple question.
Yeah, they're the Board of Trustees.
I didn't know they, I know that they're still, I didn't know that they could approve and make decisions.
Yes. And in fact, we talked about this and I sent the trustees an email. I said, "Would you like to prepare a memorandum to talk about the transition from an employee to an elected board?" Which is later in the agenda. Bear with me while I make notes here.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, now I'm caught up. Item number six. I don't have any update to give you on the cost for the legal stuff. I just haven't been to my office. I haven't been in my office in a week and a half now. So I'll update that sheet that I normally give it to you and I'll email it to the trustees just so you have it. But the last action was February 7th when that matter was closed. We're starting to get information on new bills leaving the general assembly. I can't say that I've seen anything. There's some bills impacting pensions, which doesn't impact you. There are some, there are some bills that are floating out there that talk about impacts, changes to P-TO. And some of them are kind of onerous. Some of them's, some of them are the ones we've heard before, we're going to limit it, tax increases to 0% for 2019. There's a couple out there. There's one that's even more exciting that says it's going to knock it back. You'll take 10%, 10% less than what you got in 2016 for 2019 and for 2020, it's 20% less than what you got in 2018. It's so early in the process, no one has any idea how these are going to proceed, but the game is afoot in Springfield. So if something comes up, well, I don't think we'll really have any firm information until April or maybe May when one of the houses is active. But that's it. I'll email you an update on the costs and if I, as I get information on the new laws, I'll email you guys so you know too. And that's all I have.
Okay. Number seven, consideration of, or consider ordinance 2019-01 about the updated fire prevention code, discussion, action. Everybody has the fire code? Chiefs, any comment on it?
I included, I had included the comments that the chiefs had given me. So that's, that's in this final version, I just brought a bunch of copies.
Okay, so just an update for the other board members. I met with Chief Carrani and Chief Seaver and Lake County PB and Z to follow up for them for the next board. If the chiefs were to have an issue with Bill's plumbing and he had a violation and continued to refuse to fix it after the fire department tried to work with them, this would give, we've put it in here and discussed with the county, that the fire departments can simply contact planning, building, and zoning, inform them of a violation that is occurring, and the county will come out, inspect for that violation, and handle the violation from there until it's corrected. So the process is work with the fire departments, and they both indicated that the, their desire is to work with businesses and over a amicable time period, correct anything that needs to be corrected or bring things up to date. And if they just have someone who refuses to do anything, in the code, we have the language that they can simply contact Lake County Planning, Building, and Zoning. And the inspector will come out either with them or on his own and inspect the violation that's being alleged. And if the violation does indeed exist, then the county will cite it via one of their ordinances and take it through their system, leaving the fire department out of it. If it's corrected, the fire department will be notified it's corrected and they can come back and re-inspect. So that's how we got to this final product. Any thoughts, comments, questions, or queries?
The question is probably moot, but just to be sure, this really, what you were just speaking of really only applies to commercial property?
Yeah, because you don't, you guys won't be doing any residential inspections as such, right?
Well, so it all depends on what new construction, there might be, you know, usually the county handles all that. But depending on what code, if it involves a residential practice, then it will be.
The reason I bring that up is because of the sanctuary being on Lake Bluff as opposed to the county.
Right.
So if it's strictly commercial, then that's probably a moot point, but if it would have residential, then enforcement would probably be through the village of Bluff.
Correct. I guess hypothetical, if you got a call at a house and you went into the garage and there was an open gas by something crazy that needed to be addressed, you guys would handle it that way in a residential. But this is primarily looking at when you do basic inspections of commercial problems, correct?
Correct. Our biggest contact with the county is after a fire, because they're the first ones who call, they come out, write tag the resident, and then start processing the resident as far as demolition, construction, whatever.
What the thought on this was, was for the Rockland Fire Protection District Board to not have to incur any type of legal fees in enforcing a violation in a commercial property. With this ordinance, it takes it directly from Lake Forest or Libertyville to the county, to an ordinance in the county that would be in violation, and then the county would enforce it. So it keeps this board from having to expend dollars and cents on anything that's a violation. Bob, you have anything else for anybody on this?
No.
Okay, if not, could we have a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
I'll second. Okay, so we have a motion by Crum and a second by Snowman to approve ordinance number 2019-01 of the updated fire prevention code for the Rockland Fire Protection District, Lake County, Illinois. May I have a roll call vote? Trustee Snowman?
Aye.
Trustee Crum?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers? Aye. Motion passes.
When we get to this, you don't have to send it out, but when you get to it, I told Bob, I think you should send four copies, one to keep with the district, then each of the departments can have one. And the county, I suspect, would want to have one too. That's why I had four.
Okay, we'll make sure it was four. To both chiefs, thanks very much for your added time to meet with the county and get this all languaged out. And as well, I thought it was good to meet with the county and let them know that they had a face with both Seaver and they've dealt with you, Chief Carrani, but they hadn't seen a whole lot of Chief Seaver. So I thought that was a good contact with the lady with plan reviews, so I thought it was a worthwhile meeting.
Just to follow up with Carl's comment, so the Lake Bluff building code and fire code and everything would apply for the sanctuary, so that supersedes the fire district, just like Green Oaks has their own building code, Meadowa has their own building code, so it supersedes Libertyville Fire District's code. If they, for some reason they didn't, then the fire district code would apply. In this case, it's here, correct?
Thanks, Chief. Okay, I don't think there's anything else on the agenda for you two gentlemen, unless anybody has any questions, they can certainly ask them direct. Thanks for coming out, thanks for all your assistance on these matters. All right, discussion, action for Rockland Fire Protection District on the district building. So our real estate agent is here with us and he's had multiple inquiries into purchase of the building. I've left out here, trustee Snowman made some copies of the appraisal report for the building. We had an independent appraisal done. Do you need one? Pass a couple far down, please. Would anybody like one that doesn't have one? Anybody else want one? Anybody else want one? Dave, you want one? You got an appraisal, okay. Ma'am, would you like one? Appraisal on the building? I made some extra copies. So it was my thought to discuss this and move forward to do an RFP and see what kind of offers come in. Again, if not for this board, for the upcoming board to have offers or such to consider for purchase of the building. So that's what this item is on the menu, on the menu, excuse me. It's kind of a menu. On the agenda, so Brian, would you tell us how we can move forward with an RFP? Understanding that an RFP strictly brings back offers to this board. It does not mandate that we, that we accept the offer. You could get 10 offers for the building, the board can look at it and say, you know what? We don't like any one of these offers. Thanks, but no thanks.
We use kind of a different process. It's all covered in your minutes. Section 12 in the minutes, I kind of put some of the detail that we talked about last night. The process that, by which a district sells real estate is very different than buying real estate or buying personal property, and bids and all that stuff. If, if the district is interested in selling real estate, there's a couple different ways you can approach it. One is an open bid, which, an auction, which you don't want to do that. That's, that's just a nightmare waiting to happen. The other, the other is kind of, either sealed bids through brokers, or the second option, which we talked about last time, was the district board approving the resolution that outlines some of the framework of what you would envision these proposals to include. And there's some limitations on it. You know, the first part is the MAI appraisal, which we have here, because that's, that's an essential element in there. There are some other things that have to go in, and it's all provided by statute. But what happens is once, now that we have the appraisal, if the board was so inclined, I could go back and prepare, I mean, prepare the resolution to send this out to the world, because that's eventually what it'll go to. And I mean, it's going to need board approval, because I'm going to have to go through and deal, put in all these details that go in there. The board approves it, then once you approve the resolution, then the resolution gets published in the paper, and it's published at, you know, and it has to be published at least for 10 days. And then essentially, you'll receive, for lack of a better term, to avoid confusion, proposals, you know, saying, here's our terms in which we do this. Give us your proposal. And there's a bunch of requirements that it has. Okay. Once the board gets all, you know, you publish it, you have the date, they're agreed by this date, you get all these things, the board has a meeting, the board considers these various proposals. And do they meet the requirements that are set in your resolution? And if they don't, it's real easy, you're done. But if they do, then you've got, I mean, then you're in a position to decide whether you want to move forward or not. As I mentioned at the last meeting, this, this will take a little time, you know. But even, as I said at the last meeting, even if you said tonight, sell the station. Sell the station right now. That's, for a commercial station, that, you know, that can be an eight to 12-week process easily, I mean, because of the things you need to do.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's time involved. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, one of the concerns is, and we're going to talk about it later on here, is we're going to be changing from the elected board to the elected board during this process. And, you know, just as this board has the authority to pursue it or not, the next board has the authority to not pursue it. Or pursue it, you know, as they decide that they're a board, just like your board. I just, I suspect the members will be different. But now that we have the appraisal, that was the essential first step. Nothing happened without that. Now that we have that, if you were so inclined, I'd have to go back and put together this resolution that really is going to take a lot of the information from the appraisal. That's why I needed a copy. But then, you know, draft it, you know, and then get it to you guys, and then we'll have to have a special meeting to approve it, and then, and there's a notice, you know, that you'll approve as part of this resolution, dah dah dah. There's processes to do.
Well, unless there's any objection, I'd like to move forward. Like I said, whatever's left here, the next board can continue to move forward with it or say no.
I think it's, it's really not a wise thing to do. It's quite likely, I don't know, I take that back. It's quite possible that the next board may not wish to sell the building. They may wish to take some time to look at alternatives and to see if it makes financial sense in the long run. So given the timing on this and the uncertainty, it seems kind of foolish to start a process that may very well go nowhere and put people, you know, who may, you know, you get into it, you create the RFP, they start bringing in proposals, and then, you know, in the middle of it, the next board says, no, we really want to figure out what we want to do with this building. So I don't see the reason, you know, this, this all changes in, you know, six to eight weeks. That period of time, I mean, it's not like we have somebody beating down our door who wants to buy this building tomorrow and will go away in a week. So it just seems to me to hold this process and let the next board run with this if they feel they wish to. It just doesn't make a lot of sense for us to, as a lame duck board, go through all of this at this time. So that's my thought.
Bob?
Well, I guess my feelings are, I can't imagine what, what plans they would have for this building. And I think that the longer it sits vacant, the, you know, more problems that could develop with the building itself. I think selling the building puts the district in a better financial situation, plus the necessary upkeep and other things that go with it, along with the other expenses, I think just keep adding up. I certainly can't anticipate, or I wouldn't understand what else the board would consider doing with a building this large, just to maintain an office for themselves. And I think it would be wise to continue to move with it.
Did we have much of any interest in the leasing end of it?
Not much. Everyone who's, I showed it to, it's about 11 people. All of them wanted to buy it. They all wanted to buy it. And then two or three of them wanted to buy it as soon as you could put all the legal terms together, put it in the newspaper, and let, you know, do a sealed bid to the attorney. That would be the best, you know, maybe it won't get done in time, maybe it will, but at least you have the process done. A couple of them want, two of them wanted it as soon as they can get it.
If the numbers are right.
I mean, I really think it's in the best interest of the district not to be strapped with this building, and then also having the additional financial funds that, you know, to keep them solvent. I think it just makes a lot of sense.
It's not going to go off with value.
No, no. And you could have problems developed down the road that end up costing the district money rather than saving it money.
Do we need a motion to do something?
No, at this point, it's just, you know, consensus of the board to direct me to proceed with the preparation of resolution, because like I said, I'm going to have to prepare this thing and then, you know, give it to you guys, and you guys are going to have, you're going to have to prove it at a meeting and then proceed from there.
Would Bob's thoughts at all, does that change your thoughts at all, or no?
No, this is more about the, it's more about time, really.
No, I understand, I understand what both of you are saying, quite honestly.
But what Bob's saying, I, it makes perfect sense in terms of, you don't want to be sitting on a vacant property for a long period of time. Absolutely. But again, just sort of anticipating if they, you're going to have, you know, a complete turnover in the board, not just one person, and they may really want to, you know, be able to take a look at this themselves in an unconstrained way and figure out what they want to do going forward. And I think it would be really awkward if we were part, you know, part with you a process, and, you know, if they're comfortable with it, and then they, you know, pull the plug on it, then everybody's all upset.
Well, you don't have to accept the bids either.
Yeah. Right, so I actually agree with both of you. I think that there's merit to both. But my only reason for wanting to continue moving forward is that Matt has, I know because I've come by when they've been here, shown this building to four or five different people. And I received a call as well, asking if it was going to be available for a bid. I don't think we'll complete it in time, but I don't want to lose, I hate to call them fish, but, you know, potential buyers that are, that are on the hook, that are interested in the building. If the next board decides that they just don't want to do it, then I'll leave it on them to turn it away. But I think we should continue to move forward and see what these bids come in. I would really love to end up leaving the new board with a really great bid to accept, and maybe that'll happen. So I'd like to, I'd like to move forward, knowing that we may not, you know, that time may leave it all in the other board's hands, but that's, that's okay. Then we'll leave them with something, some good paperwork to work with Matt and decide what they want to do. Okay? So I think we've got two out of three that would like to at least move forward.
Proceed, draft the doc.
Draft and see what goes.
Well, I'll draft the document.
But I see where you're coming from, Carl. I think it's a catch 22. And if the other board wants to say no, then that's, that's okay. I mean, that's certainly up to them. Okay, Brian, you're back on. Transition to the installation of the elected board. Tell us how it's going to go.
Okay, well, here we go. After our email, I prepared a little, one-page memorandum. So after, after talking, I just wanted to kind of give the board.
You have a couple?
Okay, I have some extra. The consolidate election is on April 2nd, you know, and we noted that
Chief, do you want that?
The residents voted to change to an elected board in 2017. So in 2019, by a pretty substantial majority, so by 2019, that's when the election happens, according to the law. So we elect, the people will be elected, there'll be three trustees elected. If I say, normal trustee terms are six years, but for the first board, one is a two-year term, one is a four-year term, and one is a six-year term. So you've got a staggered, a staggering of terms. And I explained that other. We had some confusion around through the process, because there's different rules applied to different situations. So that's that. Now, the other thing that the law says is that after the election, the new elected board is installed on the third Monday of the month following the election. You know, God bless as well. If the election is April 2nd, the third Monday of the month following, in this case, is May, is May 20th, Monday, May 20th. And one of the comments I mentioned in the board is it may be in the board's interest instead of having its main meeting on the regular date of Monday, May 13th, to shift that back a week to having a special meeting on Monday, May 20th, so we can do everything that you would normally do at the board meeting, but you could also do the installation of the new officers. And there's, and there's a whole bunch of stuff that the new board is going to have to do. I mean, but I tried to outline some of this. So at the bottom of you saying, we're going to do this, there's some real benefits in doing just one meeting. You know, we don't have both chiefs coming here twice, you don't have the attorney coming here twice, you don't have Tammy coming here twice, you know, we're not, we're more prudently using people's resources and time. And, and there's cost involved. It's like, don't spend money if you don't have to. So you've got that. And on the second, middle of the second page, I kind of gave you an idea of some of the things that I thought would have to be on this, you know. And it's kind of a weird meeting, because the meeting starts with the current board still seated. You have a call to order, a roll call to establish a forum. They've got to approve the minutes of the prior meeting, because the new board wouldn't have been here necessarily. But then immediately after that, then we administer the oath to the three elected trustees. And generally, they'll kick that to me, I mean, boards will kick that to the attorney, you know. So we administer the oaths. Then once we administer the oaths, then we elect the officers, and then we have to start down a whole minute.
Then the three of us are gone, and you've got a new board.
Correct, correct. It'll be just, once the oaths are administered, you guys are welcome to stay. It's a public meeting. Anybody's a member can be here. But you guys are also, can also leave. But the new board is now sitting up here, and then I usually help facilitate the election, because we don't have a president at that point. You know, somebody's going to run him out. So usually, the attorney acts in that role to help facilitate things. Until the election, you have the president, the secretary of attorney. But once you got that, I'm back in my advisory role, and the new president of the new board is running the thing. But we're going to have to do some things, I mean, and my, my brain was just floating, you know. You're going to probably want a, you know, reconsideration of, you know, who, you know, who's providing the services, who, you know, who's the treasurer, who's your attorney, who's your, you know, how do you want to do audits, you know, what insurance is, just ratify those. And maybe that's at that meeting, maybe that's at the next meeting, because there'll be a lot to do. You still have to pay bills. The board is still going to have to pay bills, and all the normal job we do. So I wanted to put this out just so everybody can kind of see, because there's been a lot of questions. In fact, I've had people call me, residents call me with questions. That's really not the best thing to do. It's better if we do it here, so everybody hears. We're all on the same sheet of music. I like everybody on the same sheet of music.
Okay.
So that's what brought that all about. But that's something, I don't think you need to decide on the date of the main meeting now. I think that's something you'd probably do at the April meeting, but that's something you probably should do at the April meeting.
Okay. Perfect.
So there's my nickel.
I think that should give everybody a timetable of what occurs. Any comments?
I just, I think that makes more sense, yeah.
I definitely agree with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Number 10. Motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Lake Forest for the lease of the district's ladder truck. So to give you just a little bit of history, after multiple people from FEMA approved Lake Forest simply taking over the grant and taking over the ladder truck, a, close your ears, Brian, a lawyer from FEMA got involved. And then he got his lawyer friends involved. And then it ended up with five, six, seven, eight of us, including Congressman Schneider's office, Chief Seibert, myself, and five people, including three attorneys from FEMA, having a wonderful phone conversation and everybody talking over each other. The end result was FEMA would rather that Lake Forest lease the truck, and the district keeps the truck. However, after it was all said and done, and we agreed on everything, and the lease was done, she said, well, you can also apply for exemption. And I said, well, all right, we're going to do the lease, and then Lake Forest can apply for an exemption if they so want. So somewhere, who has the lease? Do you have a copy of the lease? Thank you, Carl. I know I've got it somewhere. Brian, have you, you got it? It's the one you approved.
I know, I saw it, but I don't.
Everybody approved it. So, so that's what we have before us. Is there any other discussion? Trustee Snowland?
No.
Any other trustee?
No.
Grum? Okay, then I would like to ask for a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Rockland Fire Protection District and the City of Lake Forest for the ladder truck.
For the lease of the ladder?
Lease of the ladder truck. So moved?
I'll second.
Motion by Grum, second by Snowland. Roll call vote, trustee Snowland?
Aye.
Trustee Grum?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
You want copies of all of this as well? Make a bunch of copies of this, Brian?
I, I.
Because we also, this needs to be passed around and come back. The mayor of Lake Forest has to sign this as well.
I would, we probably should at least make one copy, keep one signed copy here, and then you can send the signed copy.
Why don't we sign like four copies after the meeting, and I'll send one to my friends at FEMA?
Once they sign everybody, oh, I'll guarantee you, they're going to want them.
Right, so let's, can we make copies of that after me? Can you wait, because we're almost done, and I'll send you with the whole packet of copies to get the mayor to sign and then get them back to us?
Sure.
Excellent, thank you so much. Okay.
That will be on the 18th at the next city council meeting.
Right, and when they're done, then just get them back to me, and I'll, you keep one, and then I'll get one to FEMA, put one in our files, get one to Brian, because he likes papers, and, you know, we'll go from there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay. Tammy, you're up. Treasurer's report.
Current assets, Lake Forest Bank and Trust capital, thirty-six thousand, four hundred forty-five dollars, ninety-seven cents. Lake Forest Bank and Trust checking, three hundred seven thousand dollars, three hundred sixty dollars and twenty-one cents. Lake Forest Bank and Trust reserve, two hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred eleven dollars, seven cents. Total assets at this time, six hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents.
Budget tracking.
Budget tracking, well, there's not a lot to budget track.
Right.
The only thing I had a question is, where do you want that income from TOPS to go? I just put in uncategorized income. I don't know if you wanted to put it in earned revenue.
Do you want it somewhere specific, Brian?
Oh, the rep, and building use?
She's got it as uncategorized income.
I mean, I can move it, I just wanted to...
Or do you want her to create a line item or what do you want to do?
You want it in building use?
You put it in building use. Create one building use? I, that's an accounting question and, you know, as long as the money's accounted for, I'm happy.
I just, yeah, it's in there.
Let's get that.
Okay.
Okay.
I just...
That's fine. I don't have an issue with it being uncategorized income.
As long as we haven't recorded it.
As long as you haven't recorded, Brian. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report and the budget tracking update as presented?
I'll move. So move.
Second. Motion by Snowman, second by Grum. Roll call, vote, trustee Snowman?
Aye.
Trustee Grum?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers? Aye. Madam Treasurer, outstanding invoices.
All right. Checks to approve for this month, Impact Networking, nineteen fifty, capital, seven five hundred. North Shore Gas, forty-nine, four ninety-nine oh six. We have the TDS.
Is that the last one, Carl?
The last one.
Right, because that was a little bit bigger one because we had to get out of, right?
There's a penalty for early...
Right. Okay.
Twenty-five fourteen oh three, second city appraisal, two thousand dollars. Attorney's fees, thirteen fifty-seven fifty. Next World Communications, three fifty. River Waterville, twenty-four twelve. Comcast, one seventy-six ninety-four, which is a big price difference.
Does that include the setup? Is, or is that going to be the monthly amount now for phone and everything?
That's the monthly amount. The first one already had the setup. It was like three twenty-five, I think. And then comment for five forty. Five forty was an estimate. I never got the bill. And I contacted them. They were like, you have to set up whole account and it's due in two days. So I just did a payment based on an annual run rate of what we did previously in this month.
Okay. Should be no problem with that.
For a total of fourteen thousand, nine eighty-one fifteen.
Okay, may I have a...
Oh, I have to abstain on one line item.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
Because I don't know if you want to split it, the two separate ones or...
Why don't you abstain in the...
Well, I think that's the easiest thing.
So I need a motion to approve the outstanding invoices, the amount of fourteen thousand, nine eighty-one fifteen.
Sure.
I'll second that. Roll call, vote, trustee Snowman?
Abstain.
Trustee Grum?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers? Aye, motion passes. Got that, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Billion Officers Insurance Update.
Yes, I just got the quote from this today and a chance to look at it. So we have a, you know, a quote from our, you know, existing company that we've done business with for years. Plus then we also, you know...
From Liberty, right?
Well, it's actually two different things. Liberty Mutual for insurance on the building and then from Brown and Writing for the public officials management.
O D.
They're very, very close in price. This one here comes out to be five thousand dollars in total. This is probably like just a couple hundred dollars less than this. But in looking at it, this is a much better set of coverages. I made a few notes here. When you look at the, you know, the building and contents, which is really what this is all about, and that's where the price difference actually is. It's three thousand dollars here, it's twenty-five hundred dollars here. But on this one, it's a twenty percent copay. They're both thousand dollar deductibles. This is a twenty percent copay. We have the actual value on this one.
Okay, so you want, you'd like to stay with that one?
Yeah, and there's...
Is that something we need to sign on now or renew now or how do you want to do it?
Because it's, it's just, how am I going to say? They'll just renew it.
Okay.
Okay, no, it's like...
So we don't need to have any board action, just let it ride?
Twenty-five thousand dollars last year, but it's only going to be five thousand dollars this year if you're a paper district.
Because, because you've reduced it.
Yeah.
And a motion to do something?
When is it set to renew automatically, Carl?
It will renew on April twenty-fifth, I think.
So before the new board is seated?
Yeah.
So, you know, so you're, if you do nothing, it's going to get approved. If you approve it, it's going to be approved.
That's right. Yeah.
It's going to be approved, one way or another.
And just, just...
And it's your recommendation to stay with them, so that's...
Yeah.
Good enough for us.
Let me give you, give you just a real quick rundown of what the coverage... So you've got the, you know, the property, the building and the contents, okay? But then, in addition with this, we also have what they call crime insurance, which covers the district against basic primarily financial loss from its employees. Us, the treasurer, who's the only people we have these days. But it protects the district from it, from us embezzling and that sort of thing. Portable equipment's now zero. Then there's also, there is auto coverage too. Now, we only pay two hundred fifty dollars for it. But that's so that if we are on district business and we're using our car or we rent a car to go to, you know, it covers that. So that's two fifty a year. So again, those are things that are not in here. And then the liability is really much more, this is really just management liability. Ours also encovers general liability and excess liability. And I mean, and the limits of liability are much, much higher and they also provide for, you know, relieve them, you know, like if we, if you have to fight a temporary restraining order in court, it covers that. You know, so it's just a much, I think, for the small price difference, you're getting a lot more coverage from a company that really does this specifically. So that would be my recommendation.
Who's that, Kurt?
Same one we have.
V F S?
Rose. Yeah, V F I S.
Okay. And I tell, Dan, I think it would, it would be more palatable if the board voted to approve the renewal rather than letting it renew automatically.
Yeah. Okay, you want to do that now or you want to do it next week?
Do it now. Do it now. I mean, if everybody's in agreement, just do it now and get it done.
Go ahead, Carl.
Yeah, I would like to, you know, get a motion to approve the renewal of our, of our property casualty and liability insurance for a total of five thousand and seventy dollars.
So moved. Second.